I call to order the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for February 3rd, 2015. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, call the roll, please.
Okay. Councilmember Grundin previously informed me that he would be absent this evening.
Very well.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
And corrections and our approval of the city council minutes for January 20th. Very.
Motion to approve is written.
I'll second it. And call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Correspondence. Mike?
Quietly. I don't have anything.
I got, um, the only thing I got, I got an invite to the open house for the new church up in Brookstone Saturday, and then my computer crashed, so I don't know if there are any more emails. But, uh, hell with it.
Ms. Fritsch.
I had a call from a resident on the Cook Street project, and I did get a chance to drive by that again and take a look at it again, and did that. Also, I did get a call from a resident asking why we did not have handicapped accessibility on the Commons Park. And so I took a look, and it's absolutely true. We don't have any. So I have asked that we remedy that oversight, and you'll be seeing something in the future with a couple handicaps parking spaces on the park so that handicap people can...
Okay, well, they have to be...
It'll be an ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Vicki's working on that with me.
Okay, good. The only thing I've gotten was a, um, the minutes from the, um, citizens for a better environment from Lake Mills, and I'll enter that into the record. Well, I'll give it to you later. Brings us to number five, questions and public comment. Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda, unless the item is a subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting had been called to order, state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name, address when starting, and sign in on the sheet provided on the podium.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Way, and this is my husband Dale. Our address is 351 College Street. It has come to our attention that the city is considering putting a sidewalk adjoining our, the side of our property along the east side of Cook Street. We are here to question this decision, as there are many concerns in our minds regarding this. First of all, there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street that is used very seldom. If you were to count the number of people that use it, even students, it's, it's not very many. So as far as traffic needs, it's minimal. Our house is a College Street front. It is, does not open onto Cook Street, so we would not be served by a sidewalk to our home from Cook Street, because we already have one to college. The property directly behind us is also the same way, only Mrs. Retzloff's property faces Fremont Street. So she does not need sidewalk to her home, because she has it already on the other street. So there's basically a long run of two driveways. There doesn't seem to be a real need for another sidewalk on this alley. When I was a child, this was a dirt alley, and it was paved sometime, I don't know, probably in the sixties, and I under all stand, oh, this is all history. But the sidewalk there is perfectly adequate for the traffic needs, and we would find a sidewalk unnecessary and a poor use of taxpayer dollars. Upon looking at a number of issues in Lake Mills, as far as who has sidewalks and who does not have sidewalks, I don't want to get into that in particular, other than the fact there are many places in Lake Mills that do not have two sidewalks on either side, and in some places, there's places in Lake Mills that do not have sidewalks on either side. Maybe they would be better usage of taxpayer money to put one sidewalk in, at least on those streets. In my neighborhood in particular, Marguerite Street does not have sidewalks, Dodge Court, Upper Ferry Drive, there's numerous places in my neighborhood where there aren't any sidewalks on either side. So having a good sidewalk does imperfectly work in order, it does not inhibit traffic or whatever, and it doesn't, that side of the street does have two homes that face it. Our side does not. It's just two driveways. We feel that it's an unnecessary expense for the city to partake to put sidewalks on our side of this Cook Street.
Yeah, and after, after we had driven around scoping out streets in the city, and it seems like, just roughly guessing, there must be forty percent of the blocks in this city that do not have sidewalks.
Actually ninety...
Just to make a wild estimate.
Ninety percent of the city's sidewalk, or blocks have streets, are sidewalks.
On either side, but not both.
Um, almost eighty-five percent have on both sides.
I would like to see that, well, it's not, I won't, I won't, I won't challenge...
I've got the data.
You probably have the data on that. However, the bottom line here is that it's unnecessary, it's a poor use of money that could be used someplace else for other projects. The high school, for example, the entrance, the sidewalk that comes out when you enter the high, the high school, there's no sidewalks going south to the golf course on Main Street. That's...
That's a urban, that's a rural cross-section, and it'll be upgraded all the way to almost lakeside Lutheran when the new highway is done.
Well, that was unknown to us, however, we feel that, again, it's an unnecessary expense on something that's really not needed for that particular street and our home, because it's not situated facing the alley. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Do you have any questions or anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming out on our snowy night.
Seeing no one else, I'll close questions and public comments and go to city manager's report. Steve, you have...
I provided several items tonight. This one will be talked about tonight, which is the graphs, and some additional data that I discovered, and one will be used in the executive session, and that's the trust me one, compass, career compass number forty-two. Other than that, the rest are informational, so, um...
So all the graphs changed a little bit, is that what these are?
No, but I'm gonna try and prove a point with it tonight, in that depending on how you read and interpret the numbers and where they're coming from, and how it, how much deeper you dig, the, the information changes substantially. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of leave that out there, and I'm excited to get into it, this is the kind of stuff I'd like, and I think this is a great conversation, I just keep, it, what I learned is so substantial, you know, for years I'd been thinking it was this or this, and, and then after being able to be able to sit down and actually dig through this data this time, it was, I was totally blown away by what I, by what I found out. Looking forward to it.
Any other, any questions for Steve, the council? Item seven, acceptance of committee minutes. I have before me the public works board minutes of December 9th, 2014, the Aldi Fargo Library minutes of December 15th, 2014, they'll go on record as read. Council business, boards and committee appointments, I've, I see none, is that correct?
That is correct.
Miscellaneous licenses also none?
Correct.
Just checking. Okay, discussion on the 2016 general and utility budget formats, and I'll turn that over to Steve.
Diane, do you want to start with anything?
Well, I'll just give some history. A year ago, about, I'm not exactly sure which month, I know it was before April, a constituent was comparing Cottage Grove with Lake Mills, and coming up with the conclusion that we spent a lot more money in Lake Mills than we did, than the people in Cottage, than the city of Cottage Grove, village of Cottage Grove. At that time, I came over here, dug out Steve, and dug out Jim Heilman, and I said, okay, guys, what's up here? Because, you know, that's what I do. Well, anyway, out of that, we found out that part of the problem with the picture was that we didn't have apples and apples. We had apples and oranges, because there were major differences between the different municipalities, and I think that's kind of where you're gonna pick up?
Yep.
Okay.
When, when you initial, initially talked to Jim and I, and we were sitting down trying to think of ways that would be problems, and, and two of the ones that I had discussed were transfers in and out, which are budget issues, and they tend to increase the budget without actually generating any real expenses or revenues. You transfer money from one account to cover an expense in another one, so it generates an additional revenue and expense that, in both budgets, and so it tends to jack the budget up, and we used to do a lot of transfers in and out. In fact, Betsy, I know Betsy today was telling me, I think we still do that for one of these, and I had her go back and check just to make sure, and she came back and said, no, we've eliminated that. So, one of the items that I had mentioned to Diane was, that was a potential, well, like I mentioned, we had gone through, and since her comments, and I researched the budget from top to bottom, and couldn't find anything. Another one was the chart of accounts. We have a very Lake Mills-oriented chart of accounts. It doesn't match up with the state's uniform chart of accounts very well. My budget does, but the actual chart of accounts that we use isn't really that close. So I was wondering if it was how we were getting filed into certain categories. And so those were the two items that I had mentioned to Diane, and that's why she was talking about looking at reformatting the budget, which was logical, in my opinion, and, and so I started working. What I found out was, is that it's how you choose your peer city to compare, and Cottage Grove is a village, and they're in Dane County, and every city in the state of Wisconsin is unique in some way, shape, or form. And, um, so we, we tried to make some comparisons on the, I just went in and pulled their budget apart to see, to start figuring out what areas I needed to focus on to find out what the issues were. So the one that's in your packet, not the one I provided tonight, this is the general government report that I pulled out. Now, we're a city manager forum, there's one executive. In Cottage Grove, they're a village with a village president and an administrator. Now, and a village president isn't a council president, he has certain executive responsibilities, but he's not really a full mayor either. So in this one, if you do the comparison and put him in with the legislative branch, their legislative is more expensive than our legislative branch. But if you pull them out and put them in the administrative, this is what it looks like. We're a little bit more expensive, and then this, the executive looks a little bit closer. And as you work down through a certain number of expenses, our court expenses look a little bit higher, our legal expenses are a little bit lower, they have absolutely no cable TV expenses. So we would have to, when the taxpayer alliance does their comparisons, they divide it up into four different categories, actually five, but four of any relative significance to us. One is general government, one is streets, one is fire, and then fire and ambulance, and the other one's police. And so everything that is in streets, police, fire, ambulance, is grouped into general government. So cable TV is part of general government. So now you've added another sixty thousand dollars' worth of expenses that Cottage Grove doesn't have.
Can I interrupt? Does that mean that Cottage Grove does not televise their meetings?
That's correct.
And they do not have...
Online?
And they do not have the programming for the city that, like the churches and things like that?
Nothing.
Okay, didn't know that.
Our health and human services are a little bit higher. The interesting part there was, is that their total health and human services was a twelve thousand dollar contribution to something called the colonial room. So our health and human services are weights and measures, which they do have, I noticed that, and they put it into a different category, and the humane society. So I'm wondering if Dane County does all the, um, dog and cat and animal pickups for them and no charge, because they didn't have any expense listed for contract with them, at least not under health and human services.
Maybe we should check and see if they'll take us too. We're really close to Dane County.
Maybe we can talk our county into doing it.
Yep.
Planning. Now, this is, this is interesting, because we have planning, and we basically pay our planner and our engineer to do planning-related work. They have a separate special revenue fund, where if you have any planning or administrative or engineering work that you need for this type of thing, the developers pay a fee into that special revenue fund, and that's off-budget. That's not included in this.
How can they do that? How can, isn't there, aren't there guidelines in what has to be in a budget and what doesn't?
Well, they budget for it, but they budget for it under a special revenue fund, so it's not part of the general fund.
Can we do that too?
We do it with refuse. Our sanitary, our garbage collection is done under a special revenue fund, where we take in fees and grants and put it into that special revenue fund, and then all the expenses related to it are paid out of that fund.
It's like the TIF district.
And that's not included in these numbers.
It's like the TIF district. Everything goes in and everything comes out?
Well, TIF districts are called capital project funds.
All right.
And, and there, there are all these categories, like at the beginning of the memo says, government financed people talking all kinds of funny languages that we understand, nobody else does. So when we're looking at certain types of funds, and we're talking about it, we're saying, no, no, I can't go in that one, it's gotta go in this one, but then you get into the general fund, and, and general fund is, a lot of people, their library is a special revenue fund. In fact, I, I would say that probably ninety percent of the cities in the state that have libraries do it as a special revenue fund. We don't. We leave it in our general fund.
Is there a benefit to do it? Either way? The way we do it?
I think there's a benefit to the way we do it.
Okay.
So...
But it also increases the budget of the city because of doing it that way.
It makes it look like we have more expenses, and particularly against Cottage Grove, because Cottage Grove doesn't have a library.
Cottage Grove too is...
So you're looking here at this expense here, library, there's a zero, ours is three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Same with recreation, we have, we, we don't separate our recreation out of parks, they separate their recreation out, so I couldn't do a direct comparison, so I left them all in the three areas. But then you look at cemetery, we have a hundred thousand dollars' worth of expenses in the cemetery, they have zero. Of course, they don't have a cemetery. They don't have a community center.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand how you could even begin to compare Cottage Grove to Lake Mills, I mean, they're two different entities completely.
They were going by population.
Yeah, it was by population and, and a couple other categories that aren't necessarily The planning and the economic development, like in our economic development, seventeen thousand dollars goes to Main Street, fifteen hundred goes to Chamber of Commerce, and then I think the rest is budgeted for the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation, or consortium. Theirs is basically wages for the city, or the village administrator. They divide their wages up between administration, economic development, and planning. And so you have to take the three wages from each one of those categories to pay the administrator. So like in, where you locate the village president, you know, how you make interpretations of some of these items, I'm, some of the ones are gonna really get interesting as we move down the line.
You know, this is just, just like any two corporations, you build your corporation and you budget your corporation based on the needs of the people that are part of that corporation. It's the same thing that we're doing here, so making any comparison between cities or villages is almost a silly thing to do, because they're, every city's gonna do it maybe a little differently.
Well, we go through, we want to do, like I said, we want to do a certain amount of comparison, because it helps us identify and locate issues. But what we, what we should be doing is, is vetting our peer cities, the ones that we're comparing ourselves to, they should have similar services. They don't, they should at least have some desire to achieve the same level of service too, and they should be, have somewhat similar conditions.
Yeah, but you're looking at processes and things like that, and then budgeting towards those processes, right?
Yes, and, and that's why I say it's a, it's a difficult issue to get to, but we kind of whitewash some of it so that we can start doing comparisons, because for us, it's the best way to benchmark and start making some identification. This one here is facility maintenance. Ours was two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, theirs was forty-nine thousand. The gas, electric, water, and sewer for this building is sixty-nine thousand dollars. Now, I understand that this building is the community center, the council chambers, the administration, it houses summer parks, the cemetery, and police, as well as the chamber and Main Street, and cable TV. So we have a broad category of that's in this building, but their total overall facilities maintenance is minimal compared to ours, and, and it gets to an issue that I, I want to talk about a little bit later, in that we're a six million dollar business, they're a three and a half million dollar business, and a six million dollar business is generating a lot different type of service level and expectations than a three and a half million dollar one. And that's why some of this is here, there's a lot in this building in comparison to this A couple other ones I want to look at here. If we'd done this last year, their police would have been seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This year, their police is one point three million dollars.
What happened?
They split from, they were joint village-town, and they split. And so they took a huge increase in their assessment this year based off of that, their taxes went up on average, on an average home of two hundred and fifty-six dollars for the police department alone. So now ours is slightly less. Now, this is, this is curious, and, and another accounting issue is their police liability, their workman's comp, and their police equipment insurance is all incorporated into this budget. We incorporate all our insurance into one, so when you, we're looking back at the one category where it said general insurance, I think it's under finance.
Yes.
Yes, right here? Now, they're just including their administrative people here. This is the whole city, except for the utilities. So we have certain things and features they don't have. First off, I want to mention a dam that was expensive and got more expensive. Three, two beaches, and another third property that has a lot of waterfrontage, which pushes that up. We, they list as, for parks, most of their parks are elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, or not high schools, but schools. They have very few parks in comparison to us, and particularly in acreage and facilities. So we have a lot of insurance issues that they don't have. We also have a trailer park and a restaurant, and we run ice skating rinks, things like that. One of the other ones that I found, we also have a taxi, they do not. So there was almost another hundred thousand dollars that was in our fund that, that they didn't have. This one here, this is debt service. They're at two million dollars, we're at one and a half. Not unusual, they have a much, they have a larger assessed value, so I wasn't surprised at that. What I was surprised at was why they would have such a large debt service when they do absolutely, almost, well, I think in the last ten years, they've done like three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars' worth of street capital improvements. We're gonna do five hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year. So why the big debt? Well, a million dollars of it is TID. Another seven hundred thousand dollars is water and sewer. What they do is, is they have the city or the village borrow under GO debt, and then the, the utilities reimburse them, because GO debt gets lower interest than revenue debt. And because they have plenty of capacity in their debt margin, they do it that way. So the actual part that's coming onto the levy is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In our situation, a million dollars is levy, and then the other five hundred thousand dollars is tax increment districts. So when we look at the debt, our debt, even though it's less, has a, a much more significant impact on the levy and the tax rate than theirs does.
In which direction?
Theirs is beneficial, theirs would be better. That was, one of the issues that I looked at and was trying to figure out...
Can you go back to that? You left me somewhere in the dust. Can you repeat that statement about...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to another graphic.
Okay, that'd be good, because I...
This one is the same one, except this one shows how much of it is actually put on the levy. Theirs compared to ours. Theirs compared to ours. So although they have this much debt, this is how much they're actually levying on the property tax. Another million dollars of it is going to be coming from tax increment districts. And then the final piece will come from their utilities. Ours, this gap here is tax increment districts. This is what we put on the levy. All ours goes to capital. But because they have, and basically theirs does too, but all they're buying is equipment. This year, they bought $350,000 worth of new equipment. Actually, I think they bought more than that because they put in, they took, I think, $180,000 out of their unreserved fund balance. And then put it in with this to generate enough money to pay for all their equipment. We had, we have $530,000 in street capital improvements alone. And so I'm, I'm looking at it, trying to figure out, our streets are, we have, we have a lot of areas. We have 35 lane miles. We have a lot of area that's significantly older than theirs. Probably 60 to 70% of their streets are less than 20 years old.
The homin municipality is newer than, I mean, we're an old city.
Right, and, and so they're basically just starting to come to that point where they're going to start having to spend a lot of money on upgrading their facilities. We're already way past that, and as we've discussed in the past, the reason we had about 20 years from 70 to the early 90s where we didn't, we spent very little money on capital facilities. And since, I think, 92, when Waterloo came until now, we've been trying to make up that gap. And, and we're not even really hitting that amount of street replacement that would get us on a regular cycle to keep up.
Well, and, and they're, they're also reaching, nearing capacity for their treatment facilities also. So they're going to have a, they're going to have a major expense coming up pretty soon.
So this is one of the issues that I, that I found fascinating. A couple more that I really want to go over are... This one here. If you remember back, our fire has $408,000 worth of expenses. Their, their fire had $65,000 worth of expenses. Okay, but they don't have any revenues related to fire. We have $285,000 worth of revenues related to fire because they pay into a district that covers an area. We are the district. We provide services to Asteline, Lake Mills, Milford, and Waterloo. And so they pay money to us to cover their areas. And so our budget looks huge, but really, this is the percent that would be compared to Cottage Grove. And we are a little bit higher, but not a lot. Now, they had $246,000 worth of expenses in EMS. We had 25.3. So when you look at how they blended in, in the taxpayer alliance document here, they have fire and ambulance per capita. And at the year, which is 2011 in the 13 book here, our per capita fire and ambulance was 61, 65. Cottage Grove was 48, 49. But then you went to net per capita, and they were still at 48, 49, but we had dropped to 17, 73. Okay, well, I'm going to show you how that works. And I should say that, mention that our Parks Department has had significantly more expenses than theirs. But these are the revenues generated by our Parks Department. So our revenues outpace our expenses. Municipal court. Now, here is a debate on how you split these revenues up between the police department, the legal department, because Vicki does all the prosecutions. She spends a lot of time. Police are involved. The courts involves. But basically, we could wipe that out. And cable TV. Our revenues for cable TV outpace our expenses by a significant amount. By $22,000. Now, here I've combined fire and ambulance to make it a comparison similar to what's in the municipal league document. Cottage Grove had zero revenues for fire and EMS. Lake Mills had $285,000 worth of revenues for fire, none for EMS. Cottage Grove's expenses, our fire and EMS, take them up to a little over $300,000. Ours takes us up over 400, almost to $430,000. Their net, when you subtract their revenues from their expenses, is exactly the same. It's still $300,000. When you subtract our revenues from our expenses, our net ends up being about $130,000. And that's how we, when you look at that report, and you wonder how they stayed at 48 and we went to 17, that's what happened. And so as you're trying to analyze this information and look at these reports, there's a lot that's in it that's... How did you come to that and why is it like that? So when you look at general government and you're looking at this big lump, you gotta remember, they don't have any library. They don't have any community center. They don't do any cable TV. They're, the amount of insurance that they pay is substantially less in comparison to, because we have a lot more property. And so, and then when you top it off, you know, we, we have a trailer park. We have a restaurant. We provide services in every department that they do not provide. So we provide a higher level of service across the board. So we're a $6 million operation. They're a $3.5 million. A $6 million operation is going to have higher expenses in every category down the line. They have 20 employees, no, 30 employees. I think that's right. We have 64.
Does that include utility?
That includes utilities for both. And I, and I use that comparison because I, Vicki, Misty, and Betsy handle all the issues for those utilities. So when you're trying to figure out, I'm not running a $6 million budget. I'm running a $17 million budget. And I'm dealing with all kinds of things brought a much broader scope than Cottage Grove is. Misty could be dealing with people from the utility, from light, from electric, water, sewer, police, library, fire, parks. So she's got this broad spectrum that, that they don't have. And so as we as a group are spending money to cover services that are in a much broader and more significant area. And so from level of service, from types of conditions, from services provided, we're, we're just not the same. And it's, it was a great exercise. I think it, it provides an extremely enlightening discussion about level of service and even the types of services provided. I would assume that everybody here still wants to have a library. We don't want to eliminate the library to be like Cottage Grove. I don't know about forestry. I think it's an important service. I think that there's a lot of benefits to it. I don't, I, I've never recommended getting rented the cemetery because they always come back. And so there, there are just certain things that I think that Lake Mills has accepted and understood and, and picked up as part of the service. And it's become a part of that bundle of services that people in Lake Mills, they moved here for it. They expect it. They want it. And if they wanted to live in Cottage Grove, they would have picked Cottage Grove, so.
Well, I appreciate the work you did on it. It certainly helps me to be able to answer questions of our constituents. So thank you very much.
Like I mentioned, it was extremely enlightening to, to even me. You know, I didn't, I didn't have a good grasp of how the, the taxpayer alliance was grouping them. And as I started to go through and look and make some, go back into history, there used to be a program put out by the UW extension where you could download all the state data right in a, in a form. And you started analyzing and looking at it. It was easier to pick out comparable cities, and it was easy to all of a sudden say, oh, boy, there's a lot of difference between Lake Mills and Cottage Grove. One of the items that I noted was is that Lake Mills, the average home in Lake Mills is $178,000. The average home in Cottage Grove is $250,000. I don't know that that's a lot more home, but it's a, it's more, people have paid more for it because it's maybe closer to Madison or something along that line. So when you start doing this, here's your assessed value, here's your levy, here's your rate. It's never a real true comparison because even the homes may be quite similar to what you have in Lake Mills. The value on it's so much higher because it's closer to Madison that the rate looks different because the levy is basically the same. If we charged our same rate, Lake Mills rate in Cottage Grove, we might only be five instead of the seven that we are here because their assessed value is so much higher. And remember, the levy is divided by the assessed value to come up with the rate. So what, you could, whatever, as long as the levy is always the same, no matter what that assessed value is, your taxes are going to be the same. So if I take Rudy's house and it's $10, it's worth $10, or $100,000, or $1 million. If it's equal across the board with all other properties in the city of Lake Mills, his taxes are going to be exactly the same. Going to pay the same amount. And so when you're starting to throw out those types of conditions, there, there, there's another one there that you're looking at. And then another one that we, we look at is how you're divided up. How much residential, how much commercial, how much industrial? That makes a difference. So I guess there's so many variations there that, that I don't think that modifying our budget significantly... There are some things I still want to do. Definitely the uniform chart of accounts is a direction that I want to head. But I don't think, I think everything else we've achieved.
Well, I really do appreciate you taking the time to explore it because, you know, it's hard to be up here and not have an answer, and I like to have answers. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item D. This is a discussion and decision on the sanitary sewer impact fees. This is motion 15-2-1-1. Mitzi?
City Council motion 15-2-1-1, authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Ellers and Associates for the completion of sanitary system impact fee study. Whereas, the city council of the city of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by Wisconsin state statutes may develop and charge impact fees. And whereas, said statute requires that when amending an ordinance that imposes impact fees, a new needs assessment must be completed. And whereas, the needs assessment will promote the equitable and proportional share of any fees charged. And whereas, the needs assessment has been prepared and will outline the methodology for evaluating and determining a rational basis for impact fees. And whereas, the city council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Be it, therefore moved this third day of February 2015 by the city of Lake Mills council that the council does hereby direct staff to act according to the following conditions. One, the cost of completing the needs assessment shall be funded as outlined in the memo. Two, that the city manager is directed to sign this agreement. The city council does hereby approve said motion and authorizes the council president to sign the motion of said approval.
Do we have a motion of adoption of 15-2-1-1?
So moved.
Got a second, please?
Second.
Yeah, I just might jump in here quick. This, this motion is always had, had, was unanimously approved by the Public Works Board on the December 15 meeting. Is that right?
I thought it was a January.
Whatever the, it's on the minutes, but January 15. 29? Okay, well, anyways, so the, the Public Works Board does recommend that this be approved. Open it up. Any further discussion? So this contract is for, cost of that is going to be 70, around $7,500, give or take?
Yeah, we're not doing the parks part, so it'll be less.
Be less.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll get a new contract from them before I sign it, but I...
When do we expect to get that results?
Generally, it's going to take somewhere between 60 and 90 days.
Any discussion or questions? If not, call to vote.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass 4-0.
Resolution 15-4, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. Let's see, would you please read that?
Resolution 15-4, resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. Whereas, the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, the municipality plans to undertake capital expenditures and projects, the projects, as listed on attachment A. And whereas, the municipality expects to finance certain capital expenditures on a long-term basis by issuing tax exempt bonds, the bonds, or other borrowing. And whereas, because the bonds or other financing will not be issued prior to February 1, 2015, the municipality must provide interim financing to cover costs of the projects incurred prior to receipt of the proceeds of the bonds. And whereas, it is necessary, desirable, and in the best interest of the municipality to advance monies from its funds on hand on an interim basis to pay the costs of the projects until the bonds are issued. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, that section one, expenditure of funds, the municipality shall make expenditures as needed from its funds on hand to pay the costs of the projects until the bonds or other financing proceeds become available. Section two, declaration of official intent. The municipality hereby officially declares its intent under Treasury Regulation Section 1.150-2 to reimburse said expenditures with proceeds of indebtedness, the principal amount of which is not expected to exceed $3,499,100. Section three, unavailability of long-term funds. No funds for payment of the projects from sources other than the bonds are or are reasonably expected to be reserved, allocated on a long-term basis, or otherwise set aside by the municipality pursuant to its budget or financial policies. Section four, expenditures timetable. The municipality finds and determines that the foregoing recitals are true and correct and that all of the capital expenditures covered by the resolution were or will be made no earlier than 60 days prior to the date of the resolution. Section five, reimbursement timetable. The municipality hereby declares its official intent to use proceeds of indebtedness to reimburse itself for capital expenditures within 18 months of either the date of the first expenditure of funds by the municipality or the date that such project is placed in service, whichever is later, but in no event more than three years after the date of the original expenditure of municipal funds for such project. Section five, compliance. This declaration is made solely for the purposes of establishing... compliance with the requirements of Treasury Regulation Section 1.150 dash 2. This declaration does not bind the municipality to make any expenditure, incur any indebtedness, or proceed with the projects. Section 6, public availability of official intent resolution, this resolution shall be made available for public inspection at the municipal clerk's office within 30 days after its approval in compliance with applicable state law governing the availability of records of official acts, including subchapter 2 of chapter 19, and shall remain available for public inspection until the bond or other financing are issued. Section 5, effective date, this resolution shall be effective upon its approval and publication.
You okay, Misty?
I am.
Okay, so appendix A is also included in that, that's all the capital expenditures for this upcoming year. Steve?
You want to handle it, Betsy?
Sure.
Betsy, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. The, the resolution is, as it states in here, basically so that we are able to expend general funds in order to cover some of the expenses, expenses that are in our capital budget. I want to have a lot of flexibility in knowing where things are going to be financed. Some of it's going to be paid through the levy, some of it's going to be paid through the, the bond issue. I want to make sure that, so I included everything that we had in our capital budget so that what we put in the bond is on my list.
Okay.
Nothing was excluded. So it's entirely, this resolution is to satisfy the requirements as it stated in the, the Treasury Regulations.
And the bond is on July, June, August?
Yeah, we're going to be doing that this summer, and the funds, maybe late summer, early fall will be available.
The issue that is clear and needed is that we have to state that even though we're paying for it out of our existing cash reserves, we intend to use the money borrowed to actually pay for it. And so we reimburse ourselves. If you don't do that, then they get squeamish and start having problems with the council's original intent, and why are we borrowing money, and all this kind of stuff. So this lays it out clearly that this is the council's intent, has been from part of the budget, and continues, and it gives us more financial flexibility in when we purchase things.
Any other questions? Tom?
Just, why are there three section fives?
Because I revised it too many times.
Oh, okay. I thought I was missing something here. Maybe I didn't understand.
I missed it. I was like, I know I went through it several times, and that's what happened to me.
Okay. Just trying to maximize our budget dollars, yeah.
So will we be watching interest rates? If we see that they're going to look like they're going to go up, will we move?
Well, the bond is going to be a longer process than, than that. There's a lot of paperwork and background. We'll be starting that shortly, I expect.
The, probably one of the key issues, and depends on how we decide to handle it, is, is the remodeling of the Public Works Building. If we're going to do that after we bid it, or if we're just going to run on an engineer's estimate. But we still really don't have a hard number on that yet.
But we did budget for it in the, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Call the vote, please.
Was there a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I must have missed that when I was reading it. Mr. Scharr?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Hi.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Hi.
Motion passed 4-0.
Item 9, recommendations for future agendas.
I would like to, I think, just a discussion item on the item we talked about at the planning sessions regarding getting our building maintenance systems set up internally so that we don't have the band shelter situation repeat again.
Sure.
And just more, just a discussion of.
Preventive maintenance.
Yeah, and how, and that, where we are, what we're doing, what direction do we need to do something?
Okay. I, I have surveyed all the department heads, and they've sent in all their facilities list. And I was going to send that to the individual we discussed and have him provide me an estimate on what it would cost to do it. Using the local building inspector to.
Can we do, do that under a discussion item?
Yeah, we can do that at, at an agenda at some point. I'm ready.
Well, whenever you're, if you're not ready for the next meeting, then the one after, but, you know, I, I'm afraid I'm going to forget about it is what I'm afraid of.
So, yeah, because.
Yeah. Greg is in Puerto Rico, and he won't be back until March, but I think, I don't think that.
I think we're praying him in too much.
But I don't, I don't think I technically need the contract from him. I just, the, the discussion that, that's, we've discussed that he will, once he gets that information that I've been generating, the, the list of all the facilities, he'll go through doing it and give us a proposal on what it will cost to do the, the assessment.
Anything else? Okay, item 10, convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parent 1, parent E deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session in Wisconsin Statutes 19.851, parent C, compensation and performance evaluation data of employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. There are a motion.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
And we'll reconvene in closed session in a couple of minutes.
Do we have to vote on?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Hi.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Hi.
Mr. Scharr?
Hi.
Motion passed 4-0.
And we'll take a short recess and then reconvene in closed session.